Okay, yes, Mr. Gonzalez.
When this issue for Phase One came in front of the city council, all that the Housing Authority was asking for was a certificate of need. Everyone up here has said that they think we need affordable housing, but it seems that when they went up there and the question was put to them, it failed on the city council. And again, it goes back to the divisiveness and to the vitriol in the city council that needs to be stopped. And we need to have affordable housing in Hoboken, and we need to upgrade the affordable housing that we have in Hoboken.
All right, next, coming up next is... What is your stance on bringing back the St. Patrick's Day Parade? Should it only be on a weekend? Should it be a weekday or not at all? Should bars open at 9:00 a.m. or 10:00 a.m. for the St. Patrick's Day Parade? Joe Mendak.
Figures I get this one first after my solo. I'm definitely in favor of bringing back the St. Patrick's Day Parade. I mean, just from the business perspective, a lot of businesses in town, obviously bars and restaurants, do about 25% of the business of the year that day. And also, a lot of the other businesses are having visitors to town. Obviously, it has to be controlled. I think what had happened was when the bars, they put the restrictions on the bars, everyone started going to house parties and drinking at 9:00 a.m. and doing shots. And it was totally out of control. When you're in a bar atmosphere, you have bouncers, you have people watching you. If you're being over-served, they're gonna stop you and not serve you. So, we need to get it back. The kids love the parade. My kids always go to the parade. It's a great thing. I'm half-Irish, half-Polish. I love St. Patrick's Day all my life. And it's been controlled in other towns. They do it all over the country. And for, you know, Chicago does it, you know, Savannah, they all do it. There's no reason we can't control a parade here in town. We just have to do it the right way. And it has to start with, you know, really controlling the house parties. But at the bars, the things can be controlled more. Thank you.
Peter Biancomano.
We currently spend, since the St. Patrick's Day Parade has been canceled, $200,000 in overtime on Leprechaun Day, which was essentially taking over for the St. Patrick's Day Parade. And as Mr. Mendak said, it's the only family part of the day, the parade. So, yes, I am in favor of bringing the St. Patrick's Day Parade back. But I also am in favor of providing a designated area where people can have fun, whether it's Sinatra Drive, not in residential areas. So, I am in favor of it. And hopefully, having small businesses there, setting up tents and things like that to serve the citizens who want to have a good time on that day, but they want to have a good time safely. Thank you.
Robbie Bowden.
I wasn't elected to represent the interests of bar owners. I was elected to represent the interests of residents. All right, now, when I speak to residents, they don't want this parade. They don't want this parade, not because they're against the parade itself, but they're against the impact it has on the quality of life of the residents on the day of the parade. So, for me, it's a quality of life issue, but it's also got into a public safety issue, where several years ago, you had two alleged sexual assaults on one day because it got so out of control. So, that actually, I think, is a disservice to what we're trying to do in terms of promoting St. Patrick's Day and Irish heritage. What we have done, as a city council and the mayor, in lieu of the parade, we've had at least two or three very successful Irish heritage festivals at Sinatra Park, where we actually did things to commemorate and celebrate St. Patrick's Day in a way that's proper and family-friendly. So, you know, if we can't control the way it's run, you know, I have to listen to the residents. It's a quality of life issue, and we do have viable alternatives to remember that day. Thank you.
Patricia Waiters.
I'm in favor of the St. Patrick's Day Parade. They do have a committee. They sit down and organize their parade for years. We didn't say anything when they organized. The Mumps and Sons, I have nothing against Rock. And they had billions of people come on Frank Sinatra Drive. They set up the barricades, and the city provided the resources for them. Why doesn't the city just work with the committee to provide resources? A nice area, designated area, like the last speaker said, where we can take and go when we get a little out of hand? Beach chairs, they could relax. Don't totally take something away that they've been doing for years that our kids look forward to, because they're not telling you the good part. They're gonna magnify it to sexual assaults. How many things that happened at Mumps and Sons with that many people in Hoboken? And trust me, I walked the pavements just to do that, because to show you the difference. And it wasn't reported. So, it's all about maintaining your keep. The parade's been successful. A lot of people suffered an impact by not having it. My son's sitting here saying, "No." He said, "Mommy, I'm half-Irish and Dominican." But we enjoyed it. That's their way of celebrating their heritage. I will bring back the St. Patrick's Day Parade.
Mr. Gonzalez.
The St. Patrick's Day Parade was a traditional, family-friendly event. I believe we should bring back the parade. All that the mayor did was get rid of that one event that so many people, so many families were looking forward to. We still have all the tourists coming in, going to the bars. It's still, they're still getting rowdy, they're still drinking. All that, we still need to make sure that we crack down on, that we issue tickets, we issue summonses. And the parade itself, that day, is an economic windfall for a lot of the businesses here in town. We just have to make sure that maybe they shoulder some of the costs associated with the public safety and sanitation. And we need to make sure that we work with the police force so that they have all the appropriate resources. When we have the Fourth of July here, we have tons of tourists, again, coming into Hoboken, and we're able to handle that accordingly. So, once I'm elected as your councilman, I'm gonna look forward to walking in the parade.
Frank Ram.
In 1988, when Mayor Vazetti passed away, I got appointed to the city council, and I served seven months on the council with probably the best woman councilperson ever. Her name was Helen Cunningham. I co-sponsored that for the parade because she said, "You know, everybody has a parade. Italians have a parade, this one has a parade. What about the Irish?" I said, "Put it up." The thing that I miss with the parade is going up to Washington Street and seeing all the grandmothers, the Irish grandmothers and grandfathers with their grandchildren to show them what an Irish parade is. I don't think the parade has nothing to do with everybody drinking, who's on the roof, who's on the fire escapes. The parade only takes 45 minutes to an hour to go from 14th Street to City Hall. If we can't offer our Irish people a parade, something's seriously wrong in this town.
Brittany Montgomery-Cutt.
I've enjoyed the parade before I was a resident in Hoboken and St. Patrick's Day, and since becoming a resident. But I remember most fondly coming down with my grandparents and actually watching the parade. That was something we got to do, my siblings and I, with my grandparents, every year. It's a shame it's not here anymore. I really hope that, since the city's been able to put on some really great events with the concerts on the pier, that we can do the same thing again and bring it back in a safe, controlled, family-friendly environment.
David Mello.
The parade, when the whole issue really came to a head with the parade, I would have been up for considering the movement to Sunday. It absolutely had to be moved. The parade committee was not willing to consider that. They very much dug in their heels and said Saturday or nothing. And I find that to be unacceptable. There were notions put out there that it was being culturally insensitive to people of Irish descent. You know, one of my closest friends, who lives right in my same hallway, is from Ireland, was born and raised in Ireland, and has basically said that that's nonsense. It's actually, it demeans Irish heritage to have people so publicly drunk on that day. It's been set up here tonight that it's an economic windfall. Well, it's an economic windfall for the bar owners, but it's not an economic windfall for our taxpayers, who have to pay for the tremendous amount of overtime, not only of our entire police force virtually, but of police that are brought in from other parts of the county. And the other parts of the county, even though they might send revelers to Hoboken, are not paying for those police. We're paying for those police that are coming from other parts of the county. So, it has been an economic burden on our taxpayers that we cannot have. We cannot have that sort of thing. Would I like to have a parade that goes on like in Pearl River in the county that I grew up? Yes. But what Pearl River doesn't have that we have is an overwhelming and tremendous amount of liquor licenses and the public drunkenness that goes with it, which the parade had become an unfortunate magnet for.
Jim Doyle.
Well, as probably the only Irish, 100% Irish-American here on the dais and a president of a temperance movement, I would say, no, the latter part is not true. I am, in all seriousness... Councilman Mello made the point that I was gonna make. The city didn't cancel the parade. For the people who want a family-friendly parade, there's a ragamuffin parade coming up next week. The parade was not canceled. The Saturday parade was canceled. And it sounds like the bar owners are still doing fine with the Leprechaun anyway, so they're making their money, and there's no reason why the city needs to endorse this. So, I am in favor of moving the parade from Saturday, not quote-unquote "cancelling" the parade.
And I believe that's everyone this time? The new person each time, at least. See, I'm focusing on the next question. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Laura Miani.
I am in favor of the St. Patrick's Day Parade. I don't think that the problem was the parade itself. I think the problem was the enforcement with the house parties that developed over time. As a long-term resident, I remember finally going to the parade when my son was three years old with some very good friends. And it was a fun family event. Councilman Mello mentions Pearl River. I grew up in Rockland County. I remember Pearl River parades fondly. And it's just moving the parade to a different day. You need the Irish pipe bands there, and that's why it's on that particular day. So, you can't have it during the week. Most people don't understand that. And yes, Irish heritage is not just about being publicly drunk. But, you know, to celebrate Irish heritage and to have a parade, I think, is a good thing. I think it's the enforcement. And if we can have concerts and we can have other parades, I don't understand why we can't have this parade and just crack down on the problem, which is really what the enforcement. Thank you.
Any rebuttals? Okay, Joe Mendak.
There's talk of, you know, the problems with the St. Patrick's Day Parade, but we've, you know, put this festival, as Patricia was saying, with the Dylan concert at Mumford and Sons, which we had a lot of problems there. People get arrested for smoking marijuana, drunkenness, and all that, so we replaced it with something like that. And I was offended when I got a mailer saying that the administration has started music on PRA, which H-Mag started. Four years ago, we started doing music on PRA. We did a free festival for the town, for all the kids. We had five bounce houses from 12 to 5 for the kids to come to, play for free, free ice cream. The Devils came, their mascot. We had a beautiful day. We had eight bands with a stage on at town, and we got ran out of that pier. We didn't get our date until Bob Dylan this year, and then we got our date. It was too late to have that festival. So, now, we've got an art-free festival for the families to come and enjoy, and it's been taken down. And I went to the Irish Festival last year, and when I came back, we supported that festival. I came back, we had a boot on our car. I had to get it back right away, so my kids are not happy with that.
Anyone else? All right, next plan, an oldie but a goodie. What plans you have for addressing the parking problem? Some of you addressed it already in other answers, but I thought we would, since we do get it, a lot of people care about it, you would just ask it straight up. Parking in Hoboken? Troublesome for some, and some people get booted, apparently. Jim Doyle.
Didn't expect this. You know, parking, we all live here because we love the urban environment. And one of the downsides of that is supply and demand and space. The city in the last four years has done what I think is a great job in providing alternatives to having to have a car if you so choose, whether it be the hop bus system, whether the corner cars. I mean, I don't, everyone here would admit that the number of cyclists in town has increased quite a bit, whether you like it or not. It's people getting out, using something other than their car to run errands. But notwithstanding all of this, there still is traffic, and there still is a shortage of parking spaces. And if people don't gradually choose to surrender their car, you know, through a Zipcar or whatever, the city also, in the master plan, has been suggested that we create the perimeter parking garages around the city so that maybe it's a five-block walk, but you can park your car there, especially if you don't use it every day. And that would be something that would be funded either through the redevelopment process or through a city council that had the fortitude to bond for public services that are necessary. Thank you.
Patricia Waiters.
Yes, I just want to answer this, and I'm gonna answer it again. I hope I'll be more clear in a condensed version. Three parking towing companies, three parking directors that don't even live here within the last past four years, so they don't feel our burden. Some of the directors riding around on a bicycle. Some choose the little parking ride cars. I think we don't need those little parked cars. I'm going to count in every green parking space, and that could be residential parking. Weekends, after six, free parking. If we stop using parking utility as a way of revenue to plug in a budget, we'll be fine. At the end of the day, the residents that live here suffer the impact when the parking director drives two hours from here in a nice big garage. And that'd definitely help. Now, what just happened on Madison Street is 25 back-end parking spaces that it did take a rocket scientist to see that it didn't work. They repainted the lines black. Nobody took the blame, but his excuse was, well, the last parking director left it there. He's somewhere in two countries over, still on the payroll, and they're playing games with our parking situation. It's a hard situation that we have to deal with. And I will say again, accommodate the residents' disbelief. After 6 o'clock, free parking. Okay, first come, first served. Eliminate some of those green Zipcars that we don't need, and work together on this issue. And get a director to live here locally and drive.
Laura Miani.
Yes, parking is definitely a key issue. It's a key issue for residents and for businesses. I think that what we have now is very confusing, parking regulations. I think we need to streamline them and make it so that they're more easily understood. We would look to get rid of the yellow and red curb parking. We need a safe distance, obviously, from the curb, but I don't think we need the yellow and the red. It's just very confusing. We wouldn't boot people overnight. We wouldn't ticket people overnight. You know, people shouldn't be ticketed in their sleep. I do like the idea of parking garages on the perimeters and having shuttle buses to take people around to those, you know, different areas where they need to go. But right now, businesses are suffering, residents are suffering, and we definitely need to upgrade the parking laws just to make them more clear and understandable. Thank you.
Peter Biancomano.
I'm a firm believer that parking laws in this town should help residents and small businesses and not hurt them. I believe we need to look at the revenue we're receiving from our parking authority and use that revenue not to fill budget gaps, but to create more parking, whether that's building more garages. This way, our residents and our business owners can all benefit from it. Thank you.
Frank Ram.
I stole whatever he's just gonna say. It's amazing to me that we've had parking problems year after year after year after year, and we have a parking utilities part in one of the branches in City Hall, and it makes $3 million, $5 million, I don't know what the number is, and the City Hall takes that money to fudge their budgets. I think that we should go out and use all, well, I think, when I get there, the first order of business is gonna be, the parking authority is gonna go out and look for property, buy, create more parking, make more revenue for parking. You gotta think out of the box. You've got one square mile. That's all we have, okay? I'll give you one I've been looking at for a long time. We have a fire hydrant in the middle of every block. A block is 300 to 400 feet. I want to relocate the fire pump to the corners because you can't park on the corners anyway. We have no money in for infrastructure with United Order, so the next question would be, who would pay for to relocate that pump and give me the parking spaces in the middle of each block? Everybody who goes in front of the zoning board or planning board for site plan has to relocate the pump at their cost. Give me the free parking spaces for the people. Do something about it. Not that you have an agency that just goes out and finds everybody and everybody gets booted and then set the top numbers. I got, last week, I got over $400 worth of tickets. And this is crazy. I think it's so crazy now to drive in Hoboken, where you gotta look at corners, what colors they are. And I asked a person, I said, "What am I doing colorblind?"
Time, Robbie Bowden on parking.
I think the administration, first, we need to make it easier to live here without a car, and the administration's taken a number of steps to achieve that purpose. I think that Council President Cunningham initiated a great measure where we took advantage of a state law. The state law was that you can't park within 25 feet of an intersection. But there was an opportunity to get an exemption to park 15 feet. And that's what created the yellow spaces at 200 different intersections, which created a total of, when you multiply that by four, four spaces at each intersection, over eight, about 800 potential new parking spaces. So, Council President should be commended for that partial solution to the problem. It's still a problem. I fully acknowledge that. And, you know, it's frustrating. I live in a neighborhood where I'm always battling for parking night after night after work, and it's hard to find parking after 7:00. That's just a reality. And I also do agree that sometimes the enforcement is a little bit too aggressive, and we need to use some common sense in the enforcement of our parking rules and regulations so that they're fair for everyone. Thank you.
Eduardo Gonzalez.
I'm glad that Councilman Bowden mentioned that legislation that passed. That legislation was sponsored by Assemblyman Ruben Ramos at the Assembly and was signed into law. Parking has always been an issue here in Hoboken, and it seems that the current administration really has no vision for parking. And the Parking Authority, the number that is the surplus is about $3.5 million a year that is being used as a piggy bank. We should be using that money to help alleviate the parking situation here in Hoboken. I've been speaking to residents, and there was one resident in particular that stood out. It was a grandmother that was telling us about parking, and she was brought to tears because she mentioned that her grandkids did not want to come visit her because every time they came, they either got booted, they got towed, or they received tickets. That the grandkids just came, picked her up, and took her back, took them back to where she lived. And she just was in tears. Parking should not be a nightmare in Hoboken. We should make sure also that for the businesses, parking is always an issue. We've walked up and down Washington Street, and all the businesses have mentioned that parking is their biggest concern. We should create 15-minute corner parking for delivery, for pickups, for going to the bank, or quick errands. And we need to clarify the signage. Again, when you look at the corner, you have red, you have green, you have yellow, you have blue. It's pretty confusing. And we need to be able to come up with something better than booting. We shouldn't be using, again, the Parking Authority and increasing the booting revenue by over 50% from one year to the next.
Joe Mendak.
I've already been working on the parking issue for the last year and a half. I was the head of the Committee for the Merchants and Professionals for the Chamber of Commerce. We met with all the businesses, and obviously, the first issue was parking. So, we got right on task and put together a first public-private partnership between the Chamber of Commerce and the city of Hoboken. The Chamber's put up $5,000, and the city's put up $5,000. We own all the websites, Hoboken Parking, Parking Hoboken, all the different ones. And basically, we gotta get the message out there and say that Hoboken is a place you can come and park. Right now, people only see Hoboken as a place to come and get booted, and they don't want to come here. So, there are, I talked to Ian Sacks. We met with him, with our committee. We met with Juan. We talked about all the different things that were going on. There are things in place. These garages are 50% at capacity on the weekends. The businesses could pay only half of what it costs to be in those businesses and can validate anyone that comes to visit, but nobody knows about it. Nobody knows. There was a guy that, writing tickets, and a visitor came and asked him if he could park in a spot, and he didn't know the answer to it. And this is the guy that's giving the tickets. So, nobody knows green, white, red, yellow. So, it needs to be educated about that. So, we have the money in place. We just need to put it in front of the council. The only reason it hasn't been brought up in front of council because it probably wouldn't pass because there's only four versus four, and nothing seems to be passing. So, it's there, it's ready to go. The money's in place to address the parking issue. We have it ready. What we wanna do is get the website built, the money we have, to show where you could park on the weekends, when you could come into town, and then also to market it and PR it, to tell people, "Come back to Hoboken, there's parking for you here. Come visit our town."
David Mello.
I do have to respectfully disagree with the notion that we're bogged down when it comes to parking. I've been chair of that committee for most of the time that I've been on the council. And although Councilman Russo and I can butt heads over a lot of issues, we actually get along, I would say, better than any committee out there because we all are, no matter what side of the aisle you're on, how difficult of an issue this is. We're talking about a city that is getting close to doubling in size in recent decades, and yet, there's certainly no more street area on which to park upon. So, it's not an easy issue. I do want us to create more parking garages on the perimeter of the city. To do that, we need to not zero out the surplus that the parking utility has, which I referenced earlier. It was done. Instead of just refinancing the bonds, which we're required by law to do, in the garage that was created about a decade back near the hospital, we instead had to use the surplus to pay off those bonds. That was frivolous. That was a waste of money that we could have used towards creating some things that would alleviate parking. Despite that, despite that frivolous spending of money, we have created some things. We created a shuttle system. There was none when we came into office. Now, there's one with three routes. If I had my way, we would have had two shuttles on each of those routes, a senior shuttle and a reserve shuttle in case one of them broke down, which would also set off the price of those shuttle systems because we could actually sell an advertising contract. We have corner cars, we have bike sharing. We will build perimeter parking. We do get along in this committee because this is a daunting problem, and we all agree on that. We need solutions. We need solutions.
Brittany Montgomery-Cutt.
Parking is a huge issue in Hoboken. It stresses tons of people out on their way home from work, and I know friends, visitors are really fearful of coming down here. I've just gotten my second boot since being a resident in Hoboken. My first was the day I moved in. And I got one for parking in front of a driveway, which had a tree and a full curb. And it was the right sign, so I'm not sure about that. I really would like to help revise the signage. It's confusing for everyone in town. Come up with some creative solutions for business owners, residents, and visitors so everyone can come and enjoy the town. Something that I think we can work on is the open space parking. There's an example on Second and Willow. There's a lot right now that holds about 20 cars. Making that a municipal lot would make up to 80 spots approximately, which would help alleviate some of the street parking overflow.
I think that's 10. Any rebuttals? Okay. You know what I think is weird about parking? Those signs that say, "Residents parking only. All others do this other thing." It's like, if it's resident parking only, why is the "all others" part on the sign? I find that sign confusing. Just thought I'd throw that in. So, now, we're at the closing statements. Time flies when you're having fun. So, we will begin with a 60-second closing statement. We allow applause at this part. We begin with Peter Biancomano.
I want to thank the Quality of Life Coalition and Mr. Bowden for moderating this debate. Albert Einstein once said that common sense is not so common. I hope to bring common sense to the city council by working cooperatively with whoever my colleagues are. To me, it doesn't make sense that to, instead of trying to cooperate with people to make government run smoother, you ignore their concerns and cause massive delays in progress. We need to take a common sense approach to governments. There's, the way, this way, the residents can, we can, excuse me, sorry. can, we can, excuse me, sorry. We can focus on not an old Hoboken, not a new Hoboken, a one Hoboken. And I believe that on, at my service on the school board, and there's many of my colleagues here tonight, I've sit in different committees with them, and we don't agree politically all the time, but we do work cooperatively with our leader, Dr. Tovak, who is our superintendent. And I hope to do that at the city council level. Thank you.
Laura Miani.
Thank you again to QLC and the Elks for hosting tonight. You guys have brought a lot of thoughts and opinions. Tonight, my goal really is to put my experience as a Wall Street professional, a school trustee, and a mother to help our city move forward again. So I ask for you to vote for me, Laura Miani, 1K on November 5th. Thank you.
David Mello.
You know, it was a real honor to be elected to the city council a little over four years ago. And it was such an honor because this is a city that has often attracted residents, but seemingly attracting them just for a short period of time and then not making it very easy for them to stay here for the long haul, once they've rooted themselves. I believe that it's important for any representative of this city to be concerned with the quality of life of all residents. Not just residents who were born and raised, not just residents who have recently moved here, not just residents who have been here for a decade plus like myself, but all residents. And most importantly, the residents who are the newborn and raised residents. Residents like my two daughters, who want to stay here, who want to continue their life here, and their parents want them to continue their life there, here. We have increased the parkings, the, the parks within this town, brought Pier C online, constructed 1,600 parks, which my colleague and, and running mate Jim Doyle and his wife were instrumental in making happen, acquired land in the southwest. We've brought taxes down. We've otherwise just improved the quality of life in all angles. I hope we can continue to do that for four more years. Thank you.
Eduardo Gonzalez.
Again, I'd like to thank the QLC and the Elks and everyone for, for coming out today. You've heard different points of views about Hoboken's future and the vision for Hoboken. We have many issues that have not been addressed in a timely fashion, the result of which has been failed leadership. As your councilman, I will make sure that we are proactive and not reactive in our solutions. We need to use each problem and maximize the solutions obtained. The vitriol that has affected City Hall and the federal government cannot be allowed anymore. As your councilman, I will make sure that we work together and treat each person professionally and with respect. And I ask again that on Tuesday, November 5th, you vote 2K for Eduardo Gonzalez. Thank you.
Patricia Waiters.
No long campaign speech. Just keep in mind, 9K. In reverse, that's K9. The pitbull is ready to attack. My, my name is Patricia Waiters, longtime advocate. I provide moral support for this city for the last past six years. In closing, I want you to take home the fact, to look at the person next to you, and look at the people on this stage. There's three slates and I'm the lonely independent. I will continue to work and serve the residents of Hoboken regardless to the good, the bad, or the differences. Regardless to who win this council, I will be willing to work with you, not against you. I ran a campaign on integrity. I want to see honesty, integrity, and transparency be brought back to City Hall. The other slate is running a campaign on the last two mayors that went to prison. Just a chain of thought. On 2/17/2010, a statement was made by Councilman Balla that is very disturbing to my constituents, where he intentionally admitted that he asked and answered the two questions about a lie that's being surfaced now.
And I'm sorry, that's time.
And I, thank you. Please don't forget, 9K wrapping it up, the K9. Thank you.
Brittany Montgomery Cook.
Thank you, council members, my running mates, Bob, Quality of Life Coalition, and residents of Hoboken. Again, I'm Brittany Montgomery Cook and running for council large on the one Hoboken ticket. I want to represent all of the people of Hoboken and address the issues that are important to our community. I want to increase transparency in government spending to make sure your money is going into programs and resources that benefit as many residents as possible. Conducting a desk audit and posting online spending will bring clarity to the city budget. I want to also work to install three new wet weather pumps to help tackle our constant flooding issue. I want to focus on improving the quality of life in Hoboken by doing simple things like fixing sidewalks and broken lights. I want to work on finding creative solutions to parking so it benefits residents, business owners, and visitors. It's time for a government that works for all the people of Hoboken. On the city council, I always put people before politics. Please remember to vote for the one Hoboken ticket on November 5th of Akapiti, Rea, Biancomano, and me, Brittany Montgomery Cook.
Joe Minna.
We talked a lot about the issues tonight, but I think the main thing you gotta consider when voting for someone is their character. Since I started running for council, my business has been hurt dramatically. We lost a mural project that we were doing with Artisan Town. We lost our music festival. And we also lost ours that we put on a contract. I have a magazine that goes out to every single person in this town, 15,000 copies. We could write whatever we want to write in this magazine. And we did not compromise the integrity of this magazine to write anything. Everyone asked me, "Why don't we put ads in here? Why don't we talk about our council slate and what we're doing?" The integrity of these magazines is remote Hoboken. We did not compromise that. And I won't compromise my integrity to them on the board.
Jim Doyle.
Well, thank you, QLC, again. We've all, I, I think you've experienced this occasion and, and everyone up here is, is a reasonable person and sincerely cares about our city. I think, though, that there are differences in how we see we should move forward. As far as the last four years have gone, the mayor has faced some pretty serious obstacles in the fiscal situation in the city and the hospital, and then Superstorm Sandy. And there have been still great successes such as the parks, such as the transportation alternatives issues, the 12% tax decrease. So I think if you, if, if you think we should change the course and go back to the way it was, feel free to vote for someone other than the Zimmer team. But if you want to stay the course, I urge you to vote for the Zimmer team. Thank you.
Robbie Ballon.
Uh, thank you to the QLC and Elks Club. Hoboken right now is at a crossroads. We can turn back the clock to the days of mismanagement and sometimes outright corruption, or we can keep progressing forward in a manner that's positive and sees real change for Hoboken residents. That includes lowering taxes four years in a row, saving our hospital and relieving taxpayers of a potential $52 million liability, opening and upgrading new parks, and making sure development is in the interest of all residents, not developers. So that's the choice we have. That's the crossroads where we're at right now. And it's critical to stop the dysfunction on the city council. And the only way you can do that is if you have a city council that is working with the mayor. So I urge you to vote for the entire Zimmer team of Councilman Mello, James Doyle, and myself. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So ladies and gentlemen, a lot of work goes into these events, as you know. Helen Minogue leads the effort. And please have a round of applause for Helen. I miss Frank.
I'm here.
I can only do nine people. 10 is one too many. I'm sorry, Frank.
First, I want to thank the committee for having this debate tonight and all the people that came. November 5th, we gotta pick three council to lead this, three council members here to lead this town. Our issues and my, my team, clearly, we are going to be in the forefront of what our vision is. Our vision first is immediately to have three pumps to keep this town safe. Two, it's going to be parking. I'm sick and tired of coming back in here every four years and hearing this, this parking issue. I will end the parking issue, starting with the, the block that they took back that was supposed to be a parking lot from me. 325 cars, that'll be built. Third, I'm going to be the person that's going to create space here for the things we need. For instance, I'm on the Ola board, that fast already? I'm on the Board of Ola. We need space for charter schools. We need a lot of space in this town that's here. You gotta give me a break. The question, he took some of that.
Well, it didn't take away from your time, but...
I'm going to say this. In closing, you have a choice. On November 5th, please come out and vote. My team of Montgomery, Brittany Montgomery, Peter Biancomano, myself, Frank Rea, and Tim Akapiti for mayor. Thank you very much.
Hope is on the way. I apologize for leaving all you guys out of the 10, 10 speakers each round. Now, please thank Helen Minogue, everybody, for setting this up. Helen does this every year for one reason, the cold hard cash. She does it for the cash.
Absolutely. I do want to just say that I think this panel, this whole group of candidates this time, is probably one of the most outstanding group of candidates I've heard in my long time that I've been in Hoboken. So that's going to be kind of... And the nice thing about it is they all seem to get along together. So maybe once we get through this, we might be able, we get through this election, we might be able to have a workable city council again. I want to also thank Colin Tobias George Meredith Charterly for running around and answering the questions. Ed Madigan, I don't think is in the room here, but I want to thank Ed. He is the property manager for the Elks here, and he was really terrifically helpful in setting everything up tonight. So our thanks to him as well. Frances Jennings, no longer lives in Hoboken. She moved away a couple of months ago, and she's in another municipality. But she loves the city so much that when she left, she said to me, "I'll be happy to come back and help anytime I can for the Quality of Life Coalition." So Frances, thank you for your time coming back to us. I want to also thank someone else who has been with us for a long, long time and who has worked as a selector of questions for us over many, many years, and that's Liza Duna. Thank you for coming back. And to Melissa Abernathy, who I couldn't live without, frankly. She is really of so much help on everything that the Quality of Life Coalition does. She is the Assistant Director of the, of the Quality of Life Coalition. And she does a wonderful, wonderful job. She's in, was doing the Ustreaming thing tonight, which is why she was getting up and roaming, roaming around so much. So thank you very much, Melissa Abernathy. And there is a very young man sitting right here in the front row. I'm not sure everybody can see him, but he has been absolutely amazing to sit through two and a half hours of this. So thank you very much. And to, and to all of you, I have, I just have to ask you a question. Have many of you been to our previous forums where we've held them over at Our Lady of Grace? Could I have a show of hands here on that? How, how do people like this layout better than what we have over at Our Lady of Grace? Yes, I'd like to have hands there on that.
Lady of Grace versus Elks, paid for so right?
Right. Well, I have to say, we get Our Lady of Grace free. We pay for the Elks. But how, do you like this setup better, is, is what I'm suggesting?
Whoever likes Lady of Grace better, raise your hand.
All right, how about the Elks? All right, just, just for our information for the future as, as we're doing this. Now, I have to remind you, tomorrow evening, right here, 7 o'clock is the Merrill Tea Forum. And please come back again. We want to see you. Next Monday, we are over at Our Lady of Grace, and we're going to have the ballot question on rent leveling. We're going to have a discussion on that. And then on Tuesday next, we have the Board of Education, the candidates with us over at Our Lady of Grace. So please see us again tomorrow, next Monday, next Tuesday. And our great thanks, once again, for the absolutely fabulous job that our moderator does.
So we'll be here tomorrow night, everybody. Thanks so much for coming. We'll see you then.